Good evening and welcome to this evening's school board meeting of the Fairmont area schools. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for roll call. We have Julie Lowey, Dell Ellis, myself Nicole Green, and Danielle Schutz present with Rufus Rodriguez and Dan Brokens absent. Minutes are before you.
I'd make a motion to approve the October 10th, 2017 school board minutes as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Julie. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Agenda. The only amendment that I have for the agenda is under donation resolutions that will be presented by Danielle rather than Dan. Any other changes?
I move to approve the school board agenda for the October 2014-2017 meeting.
I'll second.
Thank you Julie. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. We have some fun celebrations tonight. The first is our musical which is Into the Woods with a presentation by Kate Kollmacher, Molly Blies, and the actors.
And friends.
Whenever we show up, it always gets noisy, doesn't it?
It's always fun.
This year, we are doing Into the Woods by Stephen Sondheim for our fall musical. It's different than what we've done in the past two years. It's a smaller cast. We have about thirty in the cast. We have about twenty in the crew, which means stage crew, light, sound, makeup costumes. We have about another twenty-seven in the pit orchestra. All of these people rehearse Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, and sometimes Saturday mornings for about two hours at a time. And the musical is about stories from the Grimm Brothers fairy tales. It follows the baker and his wife who wish to have a child, Cinderella who wishes to attend the King's Festival, and Jack who wishes his cow would give milk. When the baker and his wife learn that they cannot have a child because of a witch's curse, the two set off on a journey to break the curse. Everyone's paths cross, including some cameos by Rapunzel, some princes, Snow White, Sleeping Beauty, and more. And everyone's wish is granted, but the consequences of their actions return to haunt them later with disastrous results. And with us, we have a few of our characters. I'll let them introduce themselves. But we have performance dates. Our November 8th is our senior citizen matinee at 12:30. We're working on right now, in fact, I just left school with an email to the elementary about doing a grade four through six performance for them Thursday morning on the ninth. And then on Thursday, the ninth, Friday, the tenth, and Saturday, November eleventh, we have 7:00 PM performances. The performances are seven dollars for adults, five dollars for students, or they can get in free with their ID badges. And this is the, we've really worked hard to make this not a Mrs. Kollmacher, Mrs. Goodall, Mrs. Blies directing a bunch of kids. We've really worked hard at getting everybody involved. Why not? Because they teach the kids so much more than we can teach them. We always think that more minds are better than just one or a few. So we have Rex Hurnis who's helping with us, and he's there almost at every rehearsal. And he is like Mr. Everything. He does sound and anything and everything else that we ask. You know, if we need an extension cord, I'll go get that. You know, we have Mary Schmidt who is a former FIAD teacher. She's our set builder. She's amazing. Her very first priority is kid safety. Everything that she builds, it's like a rock. It's just awesome. Terry Lindsay and Candace Petchke, our art department at the high school, are absolutely amazing. Terry is the finest painter I've ever seen. And Candace, you'll have to come to the show to see it, but she made one heck of a tree. Marilyn Fritzinger, who I work with a lot because she comes in and does batons with our marching band, she is also a sewer and is doing a lot of our costume sewing. My mom, I have to mention her because she is probably at home right now cutting leaves. But she, it's into the woods, so there's a lot of leaves. So literally, she's cutting, she cut about 500 leaves, I think, in the last 24 hours. Amy Brinkman is doing some advertising for us. Joel Hokinson and Kelly Queering have put together some clothing sales for us. Jane Gustafson has been awesome to work with in our activities department, getting us the funding and everything else that needs to be done with this. Chris Seifert in the CER office, reserving our rehearsal and performance spaces. It's just been an amazing collaboration, and it always is. But every year, it just seems to get bigger and grander and, and just, it's a neat, it's a neat event, and we hope everybody will come and support our kids. So I'm gonna hand it over so that they can say something. Introduce yourself and anything else you want to add.
I'm Eric Head. I play the wolf that Little Red Riding Hood encounters in the woods. And I also play the piano in the back when I'm not on stage. So it's a lot of fun running back and forth. And the music is a lot of fun. And it's just great to be with all my friends and who are such great performers. It's great to have fun.
Hi, I'm Claudia Blies. I'm Cinderella in this musical, so that's kind of exciting that I get to be a Disney princess again because Ariel in the last one, Cinderella in this one. So, you know, new outfit though, yeah, there's a really pretty dress. So for anyone that's into that, come see the musical.
Okay. And my name is Ben Hurnis. I play the baker. And it's not like as big in numbers like in cast as it has been like last year, but it's still like a super big and super fun performance. So, yeah.
So I just wanted to say why, why it's so different this year. So a play, all speaking, and musical, talk, 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 and then bam, here's a song about what, you know, just happened, or what's going to happen. And an opera is like everything is sung. So this is more like an operetta, sort of, because really, you cannot, as an audience member, check out when the song starts, because they're actually telling the story through song. So it would be like, instead of you talking to each other during your board meeting, you would sing what you wanted to say, mostly. See, that'd be hilarious, right?
That would be interesting.
I know! It would be so fun. And people, you know, we would really have to listen. I'm just saying. But so to do that, though, requires a lot, it requires massive skill. Like you have to really be a very independent singer and, and be able to catch lots of harmony and lots of nuance. And yeah, so our cast is really, really amazing this year. And Eric, he just does not give himself credit ever, but I will tell you, and I play the piano when I'm not on stage. Are you kidding me? He is our rehearsal accompanist. Like, he just starts playing, and we're all like, dude, we're responsible to sing one line. And he's playing the entire, you know, all the piano parts, and then he's playing our cue notes, and then sometimes he's playing all our parts. And we're just like, how do you do this? Like, you must have rehearsed forever. And I'm just sight reading tonight, you know? So I just had to let you know that. And then it really speaks to a lot of life lessons in the second half, because it's like Mrs. Kay said, in the first half, you, you know, everybody needs something, and they all want something, and yay, they get it, and it ends so happy. And sometimes we think, maybe we should just stop there. But that's not, that's not life either. So the second act does get, it gets a little darker. Like, okay, you got what you wanted, but what was the cost of that? And, you know, things like with the wolf, sometimes like one of the big lines is nice is different than good. And so thinking about, oh, yeah, I guess you're kind of right about that. Or sometimes people leave you halfway through the wood. So the wood is like life. And that's so sad, and everybody cries. And, and, you know, Rex and I are like, I already wrote into our score from the booth, this is the part where we cry. And you pretend to be tough. Because he's like, oh, I'm still a tough guy even though I'm crying. Because it's just, it's, everyone can get something from this. And so like, you definitely, definitely want to come and see this show. What was the other thing? It's very long. It's quite long. Because you probably heard, we're fourth, fifth, and sixth graders coming over. And we really wrestle with that, because like honestly, the elementary is like one of our favorite audiences of all time. These just are so, it's so real to them. Which is also why we, we decided maybe to take just upper elementary and not bring lower elementary over. Time, time is a big thing. But also, it can, it's Grimm's fairy tales. You know, the second half, like, cut off her toes, cut off the heel. Don't worry, you'll be a, you'll be a princess. You won't have to walk. Yep, things like this, like, duh! Nobody, Disney really made it really pretty, right? All of the fairy tales that those guys came up with, and happy endings. And it is a happy ending, but it's, it's a little dicey getting there. So that's why. We're just gonna save them from that for another couple of years. Okay, that's all.
Could you say the dates and times again?
Mrs. Kay can.
Sure. November 8th is the 12:30 senior citizen matinee. And then November 9th, 10th, and 11th, we have performances in the evening at 7 o'clock. The fourth, fifth, and sixth graders are gonna come over Thursday on the ninth in the morning. But that's just gonna be a grades four, five, six performance. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm excited. Every year, it's wonderful. And I'm very excited for this year too. And thank you for letting us know, all of the people that are involved in this. It isn't simple. It is a production, and it takes a lot of people. And we appreciate everyone's efforts. And you're so inspiring. I'll entertain a motion to conduct the rest of our meeting in song.
No.
We'll stay. If you do that, we are so good at, no, we have to go to our own rehearsal.
Be careful what you ask for.
That's exactly the premise of the whole show!
Thank you. Okay.
We're gonna have to talk, Nicole.
Moving on to our CER report from Ronnie Dower.
I just wanted to tell you that we were at city council last night, and they are declaring November 9th as Community Education and Recreation Day in Fairmont. And we are excited to be celebrating our 46th year of active service in our schools and this community. We're offering opportunities for lifelong learning and leisure adventures for all ages, as we've said in the past. And that certainly meshes with the school vision of inspired learning for life. We're very proud of the fact that CER continues to enhance the quality of life for our citizens ages zero and over through different kinds of involvement, engagement in our schools as well as the community. We have such a wonderful staff. We offer the community calendar. It's such an example of collaboration in our community with the school, and the city, and the Chamber of Commerce, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau. And I want to commend the school for being part of such a working accomplishment for the good of all of our community. Most of my peers don't understand how all of these agencies in government and local government and local schools can actually work together. So that's a tribute to all of you as wonderful role models for the other communities to follow. We have a great staff. We have, the community calendar, as I said, is actually a countywide calendar. And we hope, the more people that use it, the more people who put things on it, the better it gets. And it continues to be used. Chris does a wonderful job of making that a workable entity. And she goes through different types of catalogs to see if there's something else that should be put on it, if somebody's forgotten to put something on it. And it recruits other agencies to put things on there. So it continues to improve as we go. She is a wonderful person to work with, and we really appreciate all of her services for the facility scheduling for the school district too, which she does. We have three teachers for our adult basic ed and GED prep classes. Chris Eisenmenger does offsite kinds of GED classes for us. She works at the workforce center. She does a class on Friday mornings. She does a class at the law enforcement center on Monday afternoons. And she also does a class for House of Hope clients and other adult basic ed during the day on Thursday afternoons. Those are all free. People can learn to improve math skills, reading skills, as well as prepare for their GED. We have another, we have evening classes. Sarah Schultz does those for us. And those are on Monday and Thursday nights for preparing your GED, free, as I said before. And they are right in our community ed office. We have an entryway just into the classroom, which works well for those at night. We also have English classes on Tuesday nights with Sarah. On Wednesday afternoons, we have an English language learners class for adults from one to three. And that one includes sometimes transportation, if we need it for a client. It also includes childcare. And this is thanks to some private donations from a local church, which we really appreciate. So we try to accommodate the different needs of many of the people who need help in our community. You see the catalog? This is one example of what we do, but we, it's not all that we do. We have youth enrichment classes, our Lights On for Kids. We have, as I left our office today, we had 26 youth, grades two through six, in our classroom for Lights On for Kids. And they were doing nutritional meals. Foods is one of the bigger draws for Lights On for Kids. And so on Tuesdays, we have a large group, and they were making things out of apples and good things to eat and fun things to be creative with. So we have classes on Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday evenings from Monday, or three to five for grades two through six for, in our after-school enrichment, plus other things. Monday, we had a Minecraft command blocks camp when there was a staff development day. We had 20 children come from 9:00 until 3:30. That was a fun class. They really got into it too. So always something different happening. We have family roller skating. The school purchased roller skates for the FIAD department, and we use those. We had a family roller skating afternoon during MEA, had over 40 people come. And that was, that was a great thing. We have another one of those coming up on the Sunday afternoon before Thanksgiving, if anybody's interested. For $5, you get the skates and the fun of enjoying skating inside in our gym. So we also have had the fishing with friends, which is a new club that we started. We got a DNR grant from Minnesota to do this, and Tony Rosen is coordinating that. We have 20 youth involved in fishing, the first and third Tuesdays after school. They have gone fishing at Ward's Park and caught fish. Last week, they learned how to clean fish. And in a couple weeks, they're going to learn how to cook some fish. And I think they'll be doing some ice fishing and some other, smoking fish and other kinds of things related to that kind of a sport as a lifetime hobby. So Tony does a great job of organizing that. By the way, we can always use more adult mentors for that program. That's part of the appeal, is getting people, good role models, helping children. And it is a free program for the kids who are enrolled in it.
Who would they get in touch with if they wanted to volunteer and do that?
They can call me, call our community ed office.
Okay.
So would love to have volunteers, even for part of the time. But the, the kids are just so excited. And last week, after they got done learning how to clean a crappie, they also told big fish stories. I'm not sure whose fish stories were the biggest, Tony's or the kids. But they had a lot of fun. And that's a new program. We have baton trolling. We have archery. This week, we have an archery class with Chris Engelby in the evening over at the high school. Those were also from a DNR grant that we got several years ago. And she uses the equipment for FIAD classes, as well as for doing classes for community ed. So we have indoor volleyball and pickleball on Tuesday nights. You can go down there and, and have some fun with those kinds of things. We have the regular youth instructional sports, like flag football and T-ball. We had girls' basketball for preschoolers and grades one tonight, starting for the week. Next week, we have more girls' basketball starting. We also have a new junior basketball league starting next week, which Jared Thompson and Johnny Olsen are running for us. And we've got over 61 registered for that boys' league. It's a new, it's kind of like instructional, but it'll also be with team divisions, kind of like T-ball and girls' softball have been. So that'll be an exciting. All of these kinds of things for our youth and adults are made possible by the dedicated volunteers. We have a great volunteer ethic in our community, and I've really appreciated that. We also have support from the Martin County Youth Foundation, the Martin County Area Foundation, Fairmont firefighters, and other private funding sources for support of some of these special projects. And we very much appreciate all of that kind of community support. We're actively involved on several different community coalitions and boards. Sometimes I think we're stretched a little thin. But we are at the statewide health improvement program, community steering committee, the Fairmont Park Board, the Fairmont Dora Lee Childhood Initiative, Safe Roads to School. We work with Martin County Substance Abuse Prevention Coalition. We work with Area Career Exploration, Youth First, Healthy Youth, Martin County Senior Providers Network, which is a new program. We help facilitate starting this group of individuals concerned about our aging population and trying to keep them living a purposeful lifestyle. We are excited to have a expo coming up in a couple weeks, November 1st, on Healthful Living. And this will be a free event for vendors, as well as people on, at the mall, from 9:00 to 12:00 on November 1st. We have entertainment going along with it too. And it's, we're working with area service providers, such as the healthcare centers, and the hospitals, and the clinics, and Meals on Wheels, and the food shelves. A lot of different kinds of things are working with that one, trying to help people continue to live healthy lifestyles. We also do a lot, we have started the Early Childhood Dental Network in Martin County, thanks to the Southern Minnesota Initiative Foundation funding. And that's been exciting. You've probably seen some of our displays promoting early dental care for our zero to five group. We have had, we had displays out at the Martin County Fair. We had displays at school registration. We had a display at the community meal that was at one of the churches in August. We had a display at early childhood screening. So that keeps, keeps things active. One of the, in 2017, we really had some neat highlights. We celebrated the 39th Annual Fairmont Summer Run with Bob Bonk and the Fairmont area runners. This is a consecutive year, yearly thing that we have done. Great family event. Many families come back to Fairmont for family reunions at the same time. And I don't think Bob Bonk realized what he started, when he came into community ed and said, hey, we should try this. So next, this coming year in 2018 will be the 40th year that we have had a Fairmont Summer Run, thanks to him. We celebrated our 32nd Annual Family Fun Fair with the Fairmont ECFE. We worked with this Fairmont Elementary Science Staff and had the first STEAM, STEM fair, turns STEM into STEAM last year. And we'll have another one coming up in March this coming year. So that's exciting. We had our 11th Annual Youth Activities Expo with the Healthy Youth Committee. And we, this, we had our second summer of the Fairmont Park and Playground Program, afternoons at our beautiful parks in our community. And we added a Makerspace Mondays in our school as well as that. So for four afternoons, children in our area for 10 weeks could be kept busy doing creative and important things, and working with some great adult role models at the same time. So, and those are all free, thanks to our, our city's additional funding for that. So lots of great things happening because of your support and the community's support. Our Citizens Advisory Council is a really active and representative group. Danielle is the school liaison for that. And we really appreciate that. We have city, school, and various other agencies represented as populations of our community. And most of them represent more than one kind of a population. So it's a great group to work with. They do a lot of volunteering, and they advise us on activities and concerns. And if there's changing needs in our community that they see, we want them to tell us. And you are always welcome to talk to an advisory council member and have them pass things on to us for needs that you see we should be addressing. One of the things that we did was help host the Region 9 Forum on Let's Talk About Race on October 11th, a couple weeks ago. Drew over 45 adults and youth, talking about a conversation on diversity in our area, and just getting it started. Our advisory council also helped start the newcomers and neighbors program that you may see. It usually happens on a month where there's five Thursdays. And they've had some great events happen in our community for newcomers, as well as others who just want to learn more about our community. So watch for the next one on November 30th and more details on that. We work with the Chamber and Fairmont Area Life to continue to sustain that one. I want to especially invite you to our open house on Thursday, November 9th. The public, anyone is invited to come in and have the three Cs with us: coffee, cookies, and conversation. We appreciate our community that we work in, and we want you to come and visit us and, and take the opportunity to meet you and discuss ways we can keep on improving our services too, to our schools and our community. The support of the school is what makes CER such a viable entity in our community. And your continued support will help sustain us in the future. And I hope you know how much we appreciate all of your work to keep us a viable entity and to keep us active in the community. Fairmont is a wonderful place to work and grow and raise our families. Our children have received such a great education, my own children, and also our grandchildren are starting, are going through the school. And so we, we know how good our school system is. And we thank all of the staff and the administration who makes this possible, and especially the school board, for listening to the administration and the staff to keep the improvements going. It's such an opportunity to be part of the community ed program and the staff and the community in this program, in this area. And I want you to know how much I appreciate that. There really has never been a day that I didn't want to go to work. I've always enjoyed my job at community ed and rec because of people like you and the community that it's such a privilege to work with. So thank you very much.
And the community ed open house is Thursday, November 9th, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
Right. We also have an advisory council meeting that day. And if someone would like to come to that, that's from 12:00 to 1:00. And please let me know so we have enough food.
That's at the elementary school? It's at the CER office, right?
Yes, it is.
And the number for the CER, if anybody has any questions or wants to volunteer is 235-3141?
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent Brown is not with us tonight, so I will present the calendar in his stead. As far as dates to note, tonight is the new teacher banquet at the Holiday Inn at 6:00 PM. And it's also recognition of our 25-year teachers, and that would be Heidi Lumen, Elizabeth Schimman, and Michelle Rosen. On Friday, October 27th at 12:30, the school board will be meeting with junior high students. On November 9th, as Ronnie Dower mentioned, it's the CER Advisory Council meeting in the CER office. We have SDCC meeting on November 13th. And Julie has the Southern Plains Board meeting in the spec office on November 27th. I was looking at the enrollment numbers, and we are up eight students from two weeks ago. And when I looked and compared it with the same week in 2016, we have 10 more students enrolled than we did previously, which is good news. Anything else anyone would like to add to that usual spot for Superintendent Brown? Okay. Then we'll move on to financial business. Danielle?
Yeah, we have one donation tonight. Whereas Fairmont Elementary School received a donation of $197.50 from Hy-Vee to be used for student activities. Be it resolved by Fairmont Area School Board to gratefully accept the gift.
Thank you.
I'll second then.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, Dell?
Aye.
Danielle?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Julie?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Financial reports and bills, Sue and Julie?
Tonight on the agenda, we have the approval of the wires and transfers from October 6th through October 19th, and the payment of the October 24th bills. So in your package, you had the transfers for that time period. Just a couple to bring to your attention. The second one down, we received payment from the state of Minnesota on our metered payments of $383,000. And then the last one, we received pathways funds for early learners of $4,338. And that was for the time in September. Then moving to the check register dated today, October 24th, I just have three to bring to your attention. Check number 6,356 to Big Island Rendezvous. Our sixth graders went there on October 8th, and they used their student activity dollars to do that. Check number 60,362 made out to the City of Fairmont. We pay the City of Fairmont every month for We pay the city of Fairmont every month for, you know, electricity and water, water and sewer. But in addition, this month, we're paying for the assessments for Cardinal Street for the seal coating and the resurfacing. And then check number sixty thousand three hundred and ninety-nine to Minnesota West. And this is for our students that are taking fall classes through Minnesota West. And we have twenty-five students taking a hundred and forty-eight credits. And that's all I had for you. Unless you have any questions, Julie and I did review the reports prior to the board meeting.
If there are no questions, I then would make a motion to approve the wire transfers for October sixth, two thousand seventeen, to the October nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, and payment of the October twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen bills.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, all those, or any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Okay, moving on to old business, we have the LED lighting proposal. And if you recall, we went out for a bid to replace the LED lighting and fixtures and such in our district. And we had two bids come in and we submitted the, a study of those bids to ISG to confirm the equality of the bids in materials and workmanship. And it was determined that overall, they were equal. Therefore, the Operations Committee is recommending that the bid be awarded to DeWor Electric with a bid of six hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. That's approximately eighty thousand dollars less than the other company. And that probably will not be what it actually, our actual expenditures are because there are rebates involved. But we don't know what those rebates are until we submit them and they are redeemed. So also, we did, there was some research done. Most districts that have gone through and retrofitted their building with this LED lighting have realized the savings of their investment from the decrease in electrical costs over five to ten years. So we are hoping while it's never sure and it, there's lots of variables in there, that we will recoup those investments in that time as well. I therefore move to approve the LED lighting proposal from DeWor Electric at a cost of six hundred and seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
Just that it's really a great opportunity to utilize a local vendor and save almost seventy-nine thousand five hundred dollars, that's a good opportunity.
Anything else, questions? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. New business, we have none, personnel, Dell?
I would make a motion to approve the medical leave request for Cindy Banks and that would be effective October twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, through November twentieth, twenty seventeen, per medical recommendations.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries.
I would also move to approve the medical leave request for Sherri Fritz, effective November sixteenth, twenty seventeen, through December twenty-second, twenty seventeen, per medical recommendations.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Julie, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to board committee reports. First, we'll talk about the meeting with the elementary student council, Julie?
Yeah, we met with them on the twelfth of October. Very interesting meeting with the kids. We had pizza with them and it's just really interesting to hear the kids' ideas and that they came forth. We were able to, you just listened at some of the improvements that they had suggested for us, such as more balls for the noon time. And one really interesting idea was to add a shelf in the bathrooms for a place to put and organize their belongings and that when they're in the restroom. Oh, four square courts, they talked about needing more four square courts. And I'm sure that kind of goes with as the group and that, but they just felt that this group at this time just really didn't have enough play area. So we looked at adding that. And I know, and we brought a lot of this forth and I know it was brought up at the operations meeting and you'll probably discuss that with that. But were we able to grant all those, so?
Yeah.
Okay. But really, there wasn't much else, but there just some, but you know, things that we don't think of as adults that they see, oh, you know, this would be good. So it was really interesting to be with the kids.
And they were really well thought out, presented well, what a good group of sixth graders, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so it was fun to, it was fun to hear what they wanted because it was impactful to them. And then if we could make things happen, that, that's how things should work, so I think that went very well.
I do too. It was a good experience and I hope we can follow up within, in the spring as well, so. All right, Danielle, Operations Committee meeting?
Yeah, we met on October sixteenth and we went over the lighting proposal that we just approved here a little bit ago. We also briefly talked about replacing the walk-in cooler at the high school and that we can use food service dollars for that, so that's gonna be looked into, probably coming around in the future. And then we also talked about the sixth grade student council lunch and I believe they were gonna get on the shelf right away. And I know, I saw Tyler out there the other day looking for four square spots, so they must be working on that too.
Yeah, they've determined where they can paint more four square spots. And they've also replaced the nets on the basketball hoops.
Oh, yeah.
And the shelving will be done soon in the bathrooms, hopefully before we have too much snow and they're out keeping our sidewalks clear instead, so. Yeah, and that was about it, okay. Our Policy Curriculum Committee meeting was held October seventeenth. And Dell, Dell and I met with Kim Niss, Principal Niss, about National Honor Society and what the vision is that they would like to see for our school and also about the Minnesota Honor Society. And they are very, they're, when I was in National Honor Society, it was basically, we had a banquet and voila, we were members. And they're looking to have it be more service-oriented and have students be more involved in leadership roles and develop leaders, not just merit. And it, it will be a very good program when we get it done and Kim is pursuing that and looking into more of that. And we should know very soon what the plans are for the school. And I believe that was basically what we discussed, right Dell?
That is correct.
Okay. Any questions or anything else to discuss tonight?
We should probably make a motion to never entertain a thought of singing. But maybe that just goes without saying. Or some of us, anyway.
Anyone? No, okay, it's still maybe. I'd entertain a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, meeting is adjourned at five thirty-six PM.